So am I amending this?
You're on. Jeff, you're on.
If you haven't.
Thank you.
If you haven't seen it, then.
It does not work.
Oh, okay. That explains that, then. All right, just give a moment and we'll start this, this fun.
If you haven't, if you haven't seen that.
Haven't.
Then.
Okay, next one.
Yep, it's fine.
Okay. Call to order town of North Bradford, Special Water Pollution Control Authority and regular town council meeting in North Bradford, Connecticut, Tuesday, November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two at seven oh five P. M. We'll start with a salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every being just as one.
Okay, how's everyone doing tonight? Good, good. Michelle, would you provide us roll call, please?
Mayor McMillan.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Zampa.
Here.
Councilperson.
Here.
Councilor Loney.
Here.
Councilor Dinah.
Here.
Councilor Gold. Councilor Mace. Councilor Palito.
Here.
And Councilor Weeche.
Here.
Mike, is this the only copy of this?
No, I have, I have another copy here.
If you want to give a, a description, we could likely make this take place today.
Fran is here, you can talk.
Yeah, why don't we do that? This way we don't have to wait until the next council.
Then just amend the agenda to.
Yeah, we'll amend the agenda for that.
Thank you.
Just we'll give a, oh, there's a comma, let me inform you. Okay. All right. It's, it's in our packet, it's gonna be. We didn't get it today. We can take it again, right? It's for garage shorts, another big deal. Okay. All right, I'll accept motion for the minutes, previous minutes of October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, regular town council meeting.
So moved.
Move second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Councilor Diamond, second by Deputy Mayor Zampa. Do I have a discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained?
Stained.
Thank you very much. Yep, you guys were up there, thank you. Okay, on to the Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda. Correspondence, citizen statements, are there any? Oh, Victor, how are you, sir?
No, no correspondence or statements.
Okay. All right, then we will move on to item four, unfinished business. Update on Route eighty sewer feasibility study and ARPA funding. Let's hear about that.
Hi, so we're here tonight, I have Bill Storey, the senior project manager with Weston and Sampson with us.
Okay.
He's gonna give a brief overview of the progress they've made on the sewer feasibility study for the Route eighty sewer extension. I understand that, you know, you just got it in your packet.
Yeah.
Today, haven't had a chance to really review it, but we still thought it was a good idea, just to kind of give you a high level overview of where.
Sure.
Weston and Sampson is with things and obviously save some time for any questions that you might have. Understanding that our next meeting is with, you know, WPCA, again, two in a row here.
Yeah.
Is the, this December sixth meeting, so, you know, we could reconvene at, at your discretion with probably just myself if there's any questions. And I think we may get to a point tonight, or maybe by the next meeting, where we have to give them a little bit of, a little bit of oversight as far as how we want them to proceed with things, because they've kind of reached a point where we need to give them a little bit of input, so gonna have Bill here tonight and. Sneaking a little bit of an overhead presentation on it.
Are we doing an overhead? We're gonna do, gravity is the utmost.
Bill, on the master of gravity.
Good, we like that, thank you.
Any questions?
All right.
Okay.
We, we don't have any documentation on this, right?
Well, it's in our packet, there is a full presentation.
Before you begin, could you define the difference between existing flow, estimating build-up flow and estimated design flow? That's important to know that, understand that, please, Mr.?
Okay, so the. I, I, when we get to the page, I'll, I'll, I can describe it better. But we'll go through this quickly, so as you all know, we've been, we've been assigned the task of developing a feasibility study to sewer the Route eighty corridor of Section A, as, as it's called, you can flip through some pages, so we'll get to a, keep going. This is all just, this is the draft version, so that, that, that is a figure that shows the overall Section A sewer area. The brown is the area that we are specifically studying for this, for this feasibility study. So what we've done is, you know, we've, basically, just to be, I'll be very brief, we analyzed, you know, the site, we, you know, we've done like a overview for wetlands, for anything that could impact the design, we will have two stream crossings as part of this project. But what we, what we did was we analyzed each parcel, you know, using the towns G I S data. We divided the entire, the entire study area and the sub areas into logical sub areas, I'm just being repetitive, that are basically neighborhoods, so there'd be no, everything would, all, any proposed sewers would be kept within towns right of ways. Then using the G I S data and zoning maps and things like that, we were able to evaluate each parcel and determine an estimated flow for each parcel. So residential houses, you know, we used the number, the bedroom count for, for each parcel, developed using T R sixteen. Yeah, so there, so there's the number of parcels for each sub area, A one is the, the study area, the Fox and Road corridor. You can see, I'm, there's only seven undeveloped parcels on that lot and there's eight developed, so we used Connecticut Department of Health standards for the business and industrial lots to use, to generate estimated flows for that, for the, for the residential properties, same thing, we just used bedroom counts and seventy gallons per day per T R sixteen. Again, that's, that's a visualization of the, the yellow lots are the developed residential, the green ones are, you know, open space, purple are industrial and the browns are business, business zone.
And I guess, I guess it's probably, I thought it was important, or one of the things that was interesting was that out of the eighty-eight parcels that would connect, and Bill did just say, I think there's only seven that are officially undeveloped and the rest are already developed, you see a portion of business undeveloped right here, and that's just, if we say, what, just east of the Cumberland Farms, which is right here. So, but, but these properties are already hindered with being mostly in a flood zone, doesn't mean they can't be developed, but they're hindered as far as that goes. And most of the rest of this area within that A one study zone is already developed. Now, that doesn't mean that they can't improve their development and make a connection. The other thing that was interesting was, I think there's only, out of the residential properties that are developed or undeveloped, there's only five of parcels there that have the chance to subdivide.
Correct.
And there's only one, sorry, Bill, I'm.
No, 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 go ahead.
So there's only one lot for each of those, so basically five new building lots. And, and again, you know, there's probably some parcels outside of that, that main Route eighty corridor developed area that may have more residential development potential, and we still do have the notch hill development. The community development here that is primarily this piece that is yet to be, it's approved, but it's yet to be developed, so that's another one that, even though that's, I think that's outside of that, this A one area, it is another portion of the development that we could look into, so.
Right, it needs, the flows need to be included, and, you know, so for the vacant lots, I used like the Schedule B of your zoning regs to, you have minimum square sizes and minimum frontage, things like that, and I used that to estimate which parcels can be possibly subdivided or redeveloped, split in half, or. So in this, this graphic is showing, this might be your question. So in, in A, in area, sub area A one, for instance.
Try to, my vision is terrible. So, so you have existing, estimated existing flows.
Right, so the estimated flow, existing flows are our estimate of any build, any property that is currently developed using T R sixteen, which is, you know, just the standard engineering manual, or the Connecticut Department of Health technical standards. We generated, that's approximately how many gallons per day, sub area A one is generating now, we did that for each of the other sub areas. The buildout is vacant parcels or subdividable lots. And then, you know, so how much additional flow could potentially be generated under full development? And then the estimated design flow is just the sum of those two numbers. So you can see in sub area A eight, that one hundred and seventy-eight thousand gallons is that parcel.
Or a full buildout.
That was for full industrial buildout, based on how big a building I could get on there using the zoning regs and how, just assuming industrial, it's like point one gallons per day per square foot, and it comes out to a massive number, but those are the totals there.
But the residential that they have, at least that they have proposed it for now, would be significantly less if they, if they choose to build it, so.
Because that, we failed to generate an actual number based on bedroom count from those buildings.
So that would be the max, then?
Yes, yes.
So for that A one, you know, the Route eighty corridor zone there, we're at an estimated design flow of about eighty-nine thousand. If we throw in overtime and inflow and infiltration into that, I think it brings it up to a hundred thousand.
Right, that'll, that's, yeah, that's.
Which, which we do have a capacity for, for the Bradford system is where this goes. And we do, with our agreement with Bradford, we do have available capacity of about two hundred thousand gallons per day available. So this would, this Route eighty corridor section, we would have enough to, to connect under our current agreement and maybe, you know, develop a, a couple of these other areas under our current agreement, but at some point, you know, we're gonna have to go back to Bradford and just talk to them about potential for either increased capacity, if it's available on their end, or what they might have to do to increase their capacity for it.
So that subsection A eight, that's where the Fowler Road is.
Yes. That's, that's the industrial road, about the southeast corner.
Okay.
This section.
So I guess the other, in, in trying to keep with gravity, I guess the other medium part of this is probably gonna be.
The cost.
Right, so.
The cost, we'll see if the rest of this is worthy of.
So I have, I have updated the numbers a little bit, but I'll just briefly tell you, alternate one, I, I came up with three alternates. Alternate one is basically going from county road by gravity all the way down to.
Brooklyn.
Well, no, there's a pumping station.
Oh, the pumping station.
You can probably see alternate one and two aren't gonna happen this time around, we can go on to three.
Well, well, let me, I'll just, so we, in alternate one, there's a very deep cut, approximately twenty feet for about twelve hundred feet. Alternate two involves two pumping stations and gets rid of that deep cut. Alternate three is a low pressured sewer, a low pressure sewer system.
Which is not the conventional, I guess, by saying that, not the conventional system that we've used in North Bradford with our, in our other areas. What it is, is basically, it makes it so instead of the town having pump stations to look after each property that connects, and make sure I get this right, each property that connects has to have its own basically mini pump station.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Which is about a, you know, an eight to ten, approximately eight to ten thousand dollar cost for each of those properties to connect. So it more or less puts the responsibility to.
And they're, they're responsible for it.
They're, they're responsible.
The homeowner or business or what.
There are different ways to set it up, depends, sometimes depending on state funding, the towns end up being responsible for those pump stations, which is not really ideal because, you know, you don't know how they're being treated.
Right.
So, you know, it puts the responsibility of the faucet and pumps on and maintenance over time on each of those property owners.
And the other issue with alternate three and low pressure is, the system has to be sized, like the, the, you know, the, the study area has to be sized to assume a full buildout of that entire section area. So you're gonna end up with a huge, like a six inch low pressure sewer pipe before it dumps out. When, if you only have eighty-seven structures hooked up to it today, that effluent is gonna sit in that pipe a long time, because it's only gonna be, it's low pressure, it's gonna be in there for a long time, and it's gonna, I mean, downstream end, it's gonna stay.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, there are, there are order control systems you can install, you know, that you can, you can put in. The other two alternatives, eight inch stage main, gravity main, works for all scenarios.
Not, I mean, candidly, none of these scenarios really fit with the ARPA consideration, even though it's not even a half of what the cost would be in the lowest. It probably, it's still a worthy study to have, it's something we wanna consider, but expenditure of eleven point five to seven, at the low end, seven million is, and obviously, costs continue to increase, probably isn't within our budget at this point right now.
So alternative three, which is the low pressure, so not only would the business of homeowner have the cost of, that whatever the hookup fee is, twenty, thirty thousand dollars, then they would also have, in addition to that, their, their own little pump.
That's right.
Eight to ten thousand dollars, which is on top of.
And that they would have to make.
Right, okay.
And, and there's a flow for, depending on residential business, commercial is paying for flows per year, the, the actual flow that they're putting into the system.
And will smell.
Victor, are there any opportunities out there as far as grants or any other things that would help us out with this? So, that is one of the things that I know, Chris was, Chris with Weston and Sampson was, you know, if we get to a point where we can look into some of those things, then, you know, we could proceed with that. Because right now, I mean, obviously, I think everybody feels the same way, but, you know, with everything else we have going on in town right now, to take on something of this magnitude financially is, I don't know, we have the tolerance for. And even at that, we would need to see what an economic ROI would be. You know, if it's, if it's, that area is going to bring ROI for manufacturing, you know, other areas. We understand that there's a need and we would like to address that need in the future, but right now we don't have the appetite to spend too much more. Yeah, and, and that's another one of the kind of concepts that we've thrown around a little bit too with all the properties that are there. This isn't like a scenario where we have the state coming in and saying that, well, you have to disconnect all these septic systems because you're failing. We don't really have that, so, you know, we have to kind of imagine after spending, and, you know, there is some, there's like a double flood factor of a twenty percent contingency and then a fifteen, what if you wanna call the fifteen percent COVID, post-COVID contingency here, which drives the total estimated cost of, you know, would be, it would be kind of tricky to say, well, we spent ten million dollars on a brand new system and then you're waiting four or five years for a, maybe longer, for a majority of the properties there. And that, I, I think there would be some properties that would immediately benefit from this, but I think more or less, a lot of the residential would, and, you know, if it was someone with a, a working septic system is not gonna right away connect.
Yeah.
What, what opportunities would there be in this area for increased commercial? Like, like how, are there, are there properties or are there abilities to bring in more businesses into town in this area that would, that the sewer would make it more attractive for them to come into town? So there is, you know, there's a, a business district down towards the, if I call it the, the building supplies and, and the east end of all this. We do have this commercial district here and there's another business district here. It's just the, more from a economic. It's not a huge area. Study, you know, what's the potential there, we may have some restaurants that would choose to move in because it was difficult before with existing septic than compared to the area that they have. So, you know, I think there's more potential for a different variety of businesses to move in, but, you know, would, would this be the catalyst that may that happen? I don't know, or, or is there a, a type of economic study that we could look into that maybe could, I, I know, I'm not saying.
We have to chase her.
More, more, but.
Don't be chasing her tail on this right now.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Appreciate the work.
Okay. Yeah, it's a big number and, you know, the numbers just keep.
Yeah.
You know, going through the roof on, on everything, it's, it's really crazy.
It is definitely.
And with cost, if we were to do something like this, you talked about people with, homeowners with existing septic opting not to and going with their septic. If they wanted to go into the sewer, what kind of costs is that now?
Well, so, you know, that would be something that we'd look into as far as, I would expect it would work out that whatever money we can get in potential grants, it would work out that the total cost of the system would be then divided up amongst the property owners that have potential to connect and their, their levy and assessment on connecting, whether they, they pay it over time or when they connect. We can kind of write that up into our regulations, but the, the special connection fee right now, as you know, is basically what it costs thirty years to build the, I think it was the Northford system, divided up by all the properties that connected into it, and that's how that number was set.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? All right, we'll certainly look through this as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Further questions on the next WPC meeting, we'll, we'll, we'll address them with Victor and I'm sure he'll contact you. Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to new business, I see none, citizen statements and petitions? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to the regular town council meeting, reports, committees, boards and commissions, A Economic Development Commission?
So Economic Development, I was not able to attend the meeting, but I do have the minutes, they had a meeting on the seventh. Basically, talks from town manager suggesting participating in a restaurant week for, for spring. Corporating like a passport type system, which I think is a great idea, I like to go to restaurant weeks in other towns, so I think North Bradford having one would be fantastic.
Yeah.
Tonight, there was a Women of Excellence Award where six women would be recognized and town's very own Liz Kaplan is one who will be awarded for education and public service, so I think that's fantastic. December thirteenth, they have their holiday bash at Bill Miller's. Chambers launching their first video series with Totaka TV this coming Wednesday, and also launching a shop local this holiday season, giving out stickers to participating businesses to generate more shopping locally. Other than that, under new business, there's talks at Cycle Works in Bradford is looking for a new location, so trying to get them to move into town. And currently eleven houses for sale in North Bradford. And that's, that's about it on that.
Yeah, thank you, sir. All right, on to Parks and Recreation.
Parking Rec met at the end of October. Some of the highlights that, events that were held over the past month and coming up is they had their haunted cinema Halloween weekend on that Saturday, which was very well attended. They did trunk or treat, they had junk in your trunk at S T W, they had their veterans luncheon last weekend, they are having their Thanksgiving luncheon next week on Thursday. The pickleball courts were officially opened and they have been getting much use even at night. I was there last night for a meeting and even in the weather, there are people on those courts. Yeah, and.
Like every time you drive by, it's full.
Yeah, so we are the only town in the state that has ten pickleball courts, so we, and they're lit, they're also.
Lit pickleball.
Lit pickleball. Lit pickleball, yes. Yes, so they are getting much use, and then also at the end is also the hockey, right, the, for street hockey, which last night, you know, eight o'clock, there were kids out there.
That's great.
So it's very much getting used out there. They continue to do a great number on their luncheons every day on there, and they are also, their Christmas luncheon in December, actually, the Poco Fest will be sponsoring a gift to our seniors.
Oh, wonderful.
On there. The Poco Fest made a decision this year that they are gonna give back more to the community, so they made a donation to Project Graduation to each one of the school P T Os. And we're doing this for the seniors and then our sports teams that help volunteer, they also get a donation towards their group, whatever it is, sports team.
That's awesome.
So Poco paid out somewhere between four and five thousand dollars that they're giving back to the community.
That's awesome.
On that. And Poco has, we are actively starting to plan for next year, and at our next meeting, there's going to be a motion every year, it comes before the council, for approval to be able to serve alcohol at the event. We haven't quite firmed that up yet as to what that's going to look like, but before we do that, we need, we just need the permission from the council to do it, and then the police chief also has to sign, so that will be coming before us at our next meeting.
Great, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. All right, on to Police Commission.
The Police Commission meeting is November seventh, we just canceled it at the last minute, last minute because of getting a forum, the next meeting will be December twelfth.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that. Fire Commission?
I didn't make the Fire Commission meeting this month, they had a very, very brief agenda and there wasn't a lot to talk about, so I didn't make that meeting. However, we did last week, also on the ambulance committee, we met again, and I have to say that the members on that committee are doing a great job kind of keeping tabs on the ambulance where it stands, and also fiscally looking at, you know, how much it's gonna cost. One of the things that we're running into, or we were running into, is that some of the open shifts for either drivers, which could be, which have to be E M Ts or paramedics, we were having a hard time filling the driver positions with E M Ts from town, so, which was going to hurt our budget. So what the committee's been looking at is finding ways to incentivize our, our current members to pick up shifts on the ambulance and fill some of those spots. So we're exploring different, different options there that will, with the goal of saving the town money, so that was our, our main focus. One thing I do wanna mention, though, is that the second ambulance has been an extreme benefit to the town. So prior, last year, the beginning of last year, prior to the inception of the second ambulance, there was one month where we had sixteen missed calls in town. Now, missed calls doesn't mean that they completely go unanswered, a missed call would be that one of our surrounding mutual aid partners responded to that, or A M R would respond to that as well, but our people were unable to respond, so sixteen in one month time. Now with the second ambulance on, that second ambulance has been very, very active, and right now I think we're averaging around three missed calls every month, so. And if you wanna talk about not only missed calls, but also think about if, if on those missed calls, if we have to call in a surrounding town or A M R, think about what that does to response times as well, so we have to imagine that we're having an incredible effect on response times and also the amount of missed calls, so it's, it's definitely, as far as serving the people, the community, I think it's doing exactly what we hoped it would do. And like I said, as the, as the, on the ambulance committee, we are looking at the financials of it too and trying to, to make that work out as best as possible for the town as well.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Okay, on to Planning and Zoning Commission.
No meeting, it was canceled due to lack of participation. But never forum.
Okay. Important we have these. Okay, Finance Subcommittee, please.
Finance Subcommittee met last week. The police chief and deputy chief came in and discussed the possibility of consolidating their budget for the next budget year, which they will be starting to work on, so they wanted, they want to combine communications and the police department into one budget. And we discussed it with Anthony and with the new software, and he.
And we discussed it with Anthony and with the new software, and he does not see a problem with that, so they will be consolidating both of those budgets into one budget for us. We also talked about the ARPA funds and scheduling another workshop. So we would like to schedule a workshop at 6:00 PM at our first meeting in December, which is December 6th. So it will be an ARPA workshop at that time to discuss. One of the things we talked about was allocating money. Two of the items that we really need to discuss and think about is nonprofits, allocating money for nonprofits, and how that would look, and how that would be dispersed, and also upgrading to fiber for the sections of town that don't have it. It's basically going up 22 so that Public Works and going up to the center of Northford that way. That was presented to us a few months ago, and so just we'll review that in our ARPA workshop and can discuss that also on there. And then the finance report is later on in our agenda. And we also do have, I didn't see it in our packet, but at the next meeting, can you just include the dates for our 2023 so that the council can approve?
For the finance committee?
For finance.
Yep, sure.
We can do that at the December 6th meeting.
Yeah, we just made an update on that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. On to Public Safety Communications Subcommittee.
Doc keeps coming in, and Jane, who is in the next phase, but his committee was going to be starting to test all the inventory, check, test the ratings, et cetera.
Wonderful.
Just so everybody knows, we dis- absolutely love the new councils. They're very, very happy with that. Some people probably can already see it, but the Tilcom Tower is up now. The meter, it's fenced in, the meter boxes are in, they're starting to install the outdoor cabinets and bringing in utilities.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, and CIWWA?
Yes. They met on October 26th. They approved the addition of off the rear of a house and to rebuild the deck next to that new addition within wetlands areas, and that's done, that was approved as a condition. There was a second application to approve a pre-built shed to store a vehicle and a tractor. That was tabled until the committee can do a site walk to check that out.
Riving.
The committee also reviews some possible violations. Some were the result of trees being cut down within a wetland area. Any future clearing would mean clearly to the people that it has to be approved with an application to the committee. Some items are remaining on the agenda, such as the culverts that have to be taken care of, and the next meeting is tomorrow night.
All right, thank you very much, Councilor. Appreciate that. Sure to expense some Red Bull for you for those meetings. That's not bad. Learn that. I think we'll do that within- Yes, actually, that would be good if you wouldn't mind to do so.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda under 13H. Review and approval of bid specification for bid number 23101, garage door removal and replacement.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Zampano, seconded by Councilor Rhodes. Excuse me. Do we have any discussion?
Did we not approve the money for this?
Excuse me.
Yeah, but we have to approve the bid specification. Yeah, yes, it's in the capital, CFP.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Okay, well, that's H. Kyber, red safety. Just so I can read it off after. Thank you. Okay. Okay. On to item eight, Town Manager's Report. Any general updates?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Town Council, Anthony Esposito, Dennis Pizone, and I met with representatives from our new website contractor, Civic Plus, last week to initiate the process of beginning the design of our more user-friendly and intuitive website. We remain on target for a springtime launch of that. We're thrilled that Guilford Savings Bank will be celebrating its first year here in Northford with a fun event at the branch on Middletown Avenue this Saturday, November 19th. That'll be from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The event will feature Touch a Truck for kids, free pizza and food and drinks, face painting for kids, and special giveaways. Those who can are encouraged to stop in and congratulate them on their first year here. As was mentioned earlier, I was pleased to join Mayor McMillan this afternoon at a luncheon held by the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce as they recognized six Women of Excellence from shoreline communities, including North Branford's own Dale Izzo and Liz Kaplan. Dale's a Northford resident, is a longtime employee of the Town of Branford, where she spearheads the Branford Festival, and having successfully brought it back from a two-year COVID hiatus. And Liz is an art teacher here at NBHS and also serves as Chair of our Economic Development Commission. And in addition to their awards, they are presented with citations from the Town of North Branford and the Connecticut General Assembly. It was a pleasure to be on hand, on behalf of the town, to thank them for the differences that they have made in our communities. The Totaka Historical Society is calling on owners of historical homes in town to feature their doors and their 2024 calendar, so if you would like to see your doorway featured, contact Nancy at 203-500-0267. I want to feature mine, but mine's only like five years old, so I don't think it qualifies. Also, we haven't met since before Halloween, so I wanted to take a moment to publicly congratulate our winners in the first annual Halloween decoration contest that was conducted between Town of North Branford departments. The competition was fierce, however, the results and the prizes are as follows. First place, Edward Smith Library. The staff were awarded a portable pizza party in the form of a $100 gift certificate to Giovanni's Pizza in Northford. Second place is the Finance Department. All staff received a $10 gift certificate to stewards of the Land Brewery. And third place, Town Clerk's Office. All staff received $10 gift certificates of Dunkin' Donuts. And there's an honorable mention of the Social Services Department, which was decorated by 15 preschoolers, and they all received goodie bags for their efforts. And a special thanks to our judges for this event. We had Town Councilors Rose Angeloni and Marie Diamond, and I want to thank them for coming out and visiting and doing the judging, and also to the staff who worked hard to make a festive atmosphere to the visitors to our departments during the Halloween season.
And they're all looking forward to possibly a Christmas tour decorating.
I can confirm the rumors, there will be a Christmas-themed decoration as well, so we're looking forward to that.
And it was a lot of fun to do that.
Yeah.
Yes. Let me judge you in this next moment.
Third prize was the Town Clerk's Office. Lastly, as we follow on the heels of Veterans Day, I'm seeking an informal approval from the Town Council to proceed with having the Town of North Branford designated as a Purple Heart community. North Branford's a community that is deeply supportive of its veterans, and receiving the designation will show our continued support. As you are all likely aware, the Purple Heart is a military honor given to those in the armed forces that are wounded or killed as a result of enemy action. The process would involve developing a proclamation for our town as a Purple Heart community in conjunction with the Connecticut Department of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, and we would organize a ceremony inviting all of our local veterans to participate for the designation. Town would receive two road signs to be placed at our discretion stating that our town is so designated, and we would be authorized to fly the Purple Heart flag here at Town Hall on Purple Heart Day, which is August 7th. So I would aim at probably having this event within the proximity of this coming August 7th, though avoiding the Poco Festival dates, because I know that that's the first, usually the first week in August. But if, I figured this was kind of a non-controversial thing, so if you guys were in favor of that, I could go ahead and pursue that.
I believe we are. Do we need a motion for that?
No.
Show of hands. Aye.
All right, I'll get to work on it, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And that's the end of my general updates.
Thank you. On to item B, update on COVID-19 testing and vaccine.
Sure. The East Shore Health District continues to conduct vaccination clinics here in North Branford, as well as in Branford and East Haven. There was a vaccine clinic conducted today, and there's one every Tuesday from 1:00 to 5:00 through November and December at Zion Episcopal Church in their parish hall on Notch Hill Road, and these clinics are for all ages, six months and up, no appointment necessary. We're also having a COVID clinic at Stanley T. Williams Community Center on Middletown Avenue tomorrow, November 16th, from 10:00 AM until 1:00. This is a Moderna vaccine clinic for those 18 and over with first and second and booster doses available. The latest East Shore Health District report is before you. The cases in North Branford continue to trend down since the summer months. So far, for the month of November, we have 10 laboratory confirmed cases of COVID recorded in town, and there were a total of 59 in the month of October. There have been no recorded COVID-related fatalities in North Branford since August, and Connecticut has an overall decline in COVID hospitalizations by 14.7% in the two weeks prior to November 3rd. You have in county remains in the medium or yellow community level, according to the CDC. That is my COVID report.
All right, thank you, sir. And on to the Permanent Project Building Committee.
With the Stanley T. Williams Roof Project, the project will be advertised this weekend. With the Police Station and EOC project, the final archaeological report has been received. The report does not differ materially from the preliminary report, which all of you have already received. I'll forward the copy of the final report to the council tomorrow. Again, as it's undergoing the FEMA review with the tribes, I would ask that you continue to keep the confidential nature of the final report, just as you have with the preliminary report. And we remain on track for a January start date of that project. For North Branford Intermediate School Roof Project, the Permanent Project Building Committee will review this on November 21st and then send to the Town Council for the approval to bid. And with the North Branford High School Project, the work is progressing there. The rooftop units are scheduled for December 9th delivery. The actual move date is still fluid based on the final deliveries. An extended warranty for items installed out of the spec temperatures has tentatively been agreed to for one full year after substantial completion of the full project, which would be spring of 2025. With 51% of the project completed, Gilbane has utilized 272,000 of their 1.75 million contingency, which equates to 15.5%.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, on to item nine, community events and presentations.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to let everyone know that at this time right now, Babi Noon and her coaching staff and her, the North Branford Field Hockey Lady T-Birds are currently playing in the semifinals for states down in Trumbull. With a win tonight, they would play in the finals on Saturday. They were state champions last year, so we're hoping for a repeat this year, and they also won the shorelines again this year, which I think was either number six or seven in a row for them. So congratulations to Babi and the girls, the Lady T-Birds at the high school, and we hope that tonight is successful for you. They're playing in Trumbull, and Saturday's finals are in Weatherspoon.
Wonderful, thank you. Good luck to the Lady T-Birds. Go get them. All right, on to item 10, citizen statements, petitions, and correspondence. Hello, Bill. How are you, sir? You wouldn't mind stating your name and address, sir?
Bill Samristano, Sunnyside Drive. A pleasant surprise from Mr. Downs here about the Purple Heart, and I know we talked about it, and we're right next to Mike at the Poco Fest, so looking forward to August when it happens. Thanks, man. And saying thank you is last year, last week, being Veterans Day, the usual, the group at the Pocket Rec, Jessica and Kathy and the staff, Gary, did a usual good job for our luncheon, and it was a little unique this year. In advance, they had got, it was an open, they called it an open care kit. It's a package that goes, is put together, and it goes away to the guys in the service. And it was nice. We actually, after lunch, we actually took a box, a postal box, and put items in it. It was just a little touch, and it was, for me, it was nice. Thank you. Also, I can't say enough about the school system, what they do. I go over, I don't miss a meal, as you can tell, and I go over to Jerome in the morning for breakfast, and the little ones are amazing. This little blond-headed kid, he's got a tie-dye flight shirt on, he's whatever, six ish, and he gives me a head nod, and I walk down the counter, and he directs me into the cafeteria. But there was, and I told Connor Welch and a couple other people, it was really attention to detail, and that was, that was nice. So thanks for that. I'm really here tonight to talk about, and what I've mentioned before, it follows back as 2019, when the council approved bonding the money for the school, and that's doing something for our vulnerable seniors. I've mentioned it, this is probably my fourth time. A few weeks ago, I sent it in on an email. Email wasn't too, it was rushed and wasn't too coherent, but Mike, Mayor read it. But anyway, and a week or two, the last council meeting, Mr. Bates brought it up, barging some relief for our vulnerable seniors. Now, Anthony brought up that night the fact that we have something on the books, the tax relief eligibility and for disability. Am I saying it right? Yeah, I think so. But anyway, three things about it, and you really, you guys, I'm not here to throw a lot of figures around, I do know some, talked to Mr. Ambrose about it, but basically, I think you should talk about it. Everybody knows what's going on in the world about everybody's business, and those seniors that are on that fixed income, they need help. Federal government is going to give us a raise before the end of the year, about 9%, but 10% is what you're bonding, adding to the tax rolls for anybody with personal property. So what I got from the item that's in the code and the books is you need two, three things. You had to raise the threshold of the people to qualify. And it was this ordinance came about and approved in 2000, so it's 22 years old. It was actually 22 years old yesterday, it was actually in stated, November 14th. But the thresholds are 42,000. Talking with Dave, and I'm not going to speak for Dave, but from what I got from it, we got to raise the single person to like 48, 50,000, and the double, the married people to mid-50s, so those people can qualify, because some of them are low income and those lower threshold don't qualify anymore. That's number one. Number two, the credit part of it, it was only $300, that's what it was stated 22 years ago. We're going to raise that. I don't know what you can do, you're really going to have to talk about it. I'd say you're really going to think about it almost three times, up to 900. You know, I originally talked about this tax thing, I was talking about a freeze. Guilford has a freeze, and it looks a lot similar to our code. I'm not an attorney, but it looks like it's all there. But ours could be adequate, for sure. But I think, you know, we've got to get up there about that number. We don't, we're not doing much good. So I'll leave it up to you guys. Thanks for bringing up last time, Ben. And next thing I wanted to talk about is the Permanent Project Building Committee. I've been watching the meetings, although I haven't been here, and I see you've had some issues with product and what's going on. You still got another year and a half of building, police stations, starts, and everything. I can't see why those meetings are not on tape. I've mentioned this a long time ago for any new councilors, you go back sometime, I think there's the police, fire, Pocket Rec, they should all be on tape. You know, a little history for the people that don't know, six years ago, Mr. Mann came in from the Public Access TV, and it was, it was discovered that we weren't contributing all to public access, like other towns do, but now everything's relative as far as how many meetings they do, so. But since then, I think if I remember, we're contributing about 18,000. And I don't want to say we shouldn't get our monies, but I think we should get more of our meetings on video. A reference to, you know, a year and a half ago was when Anthony gave us the, sort of the- A reference to, you know, a year and a half ago is when Anthony gave us sort of the estimate of pretty much what the other bonding is going to do for each person, for each person's personal property. A home that's worth 350,000 is going to pay about $700 to $800 more. That was before this whole inflation thing and God knows whatever. So maybe at some time, I have a special meeting in August, it was a spreadsheet on all the money of bonding, and if I remember right from what I read or understand it, the total would be like 118 million once all the interests and everything is combined. Does that, anybody know that? Is that right, Anthony?
I think you're probably pretty accurate, Bill.
Anyway, so if there's something maybe you can present, tell us a little bit more, that'd be helpful. The ARPA funds, you tabled them in June. Nice to see you had presentation, I guess that's what you were waiting for. But you had them on Finance Committee meetings, you canceled and whatever. But I, hopefully, you spend the money in the right direction. I don't think the S U is the right thing, but I'm not going to argue with, I think we should be more appropriate for things than are present. There have been nonprofits, we don't have as many nonprofits. The towns are, believe it or not, I watch a lot of other town meetings, I get nothing else to do. And all these towns are up in the air about ARPA funds, it's a big thing, but they're getting a lot more money than we got, so it's bigger than them, obviously, and they get more businesses than we do. But anyway, I just want to make sure it's spent in the right directions. I mentioned on my email a few weeks ago, maybe there's something we, a little more talk of, maybe I mentioned flooded areas. Now, we got a couple of towns in, a couple areas in town that have floods. Let's not forget those, because you only remember them when you have the thousand, hundred-year rain or something, you know. So let's be on the right thing, have some, hopefully, the next meeting for Finance Company or Finance Committee will put more light on some of that stuff. And why couldn't some of that money be used for the Tower One? Now, I know you got 250,000 going, pouring out of the ARPA funds, why don't you just pay it off out of the ARPA funds? Because the way I understand it, you have a little over a million on contingency for capital products each year, and already, you're into, the next year for 250 goes another payment. Pay it all off out of the ARPA funds. You know, with bonding all this money, hopefully, a lot of town departments have got all their little bonding things out of the way, because the taxpayers are going to be hurt. Not taxpayers, don't know. There was a, I forgot to mention that, as far as the tax relief thing. The third part, I think the more important part is, formulate a letter, use the best words we've got here. Put a letter out there explaining, this is the tax state of the town. Let them know where all this money is going. Number two, tell them about this new tax relief thing, once you do something with it. Also, make them aware of some stuff that comes out of the Louis Supreme's office, Social Services. There's a lot that qualify for these people, but not all of them get there, not all that I discussed last time. It's not well-publicized. I didn't see anything in the Tuket Times, I thought you were going to put something in there, maybe you just didn't make it on time. But that's, that's all going to be in a letter. Get it out to all the taxpayers.
Thank you, sir.
You're really owed to them, I mean, really. And part of that thing was a car assessment. Now, last February, when you talked about the assessment on cars, oh, my old jalopy there is over, all of a sudden, I'm paying another 50 bucks on that thing. I was only paying 100. And of course, that's on the lower end of the scale, but big cars are paying a lot more money. What happens when, and the official, the letter never went out with the tax bill, he promised the letter. So let's put that in that letter for the year, think, but what happens, this is a question, what happens when the, can I say something?
No, you're good. We only give a lot, so much time, I'm going to give you a couple more minutes.
Pretty close.
Yeah, good.
What happens to, new car prices are coming down a little bit. What happens when news car prices come down? Is the assessment coming? That's enough. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Bill, stay there.
Yes.
I'd like to read something. Bill was talking about the code for North Branford. I'd like to read something. Section 213, section 9, item D. Persons qualifying for income individually if unmarried during the calendar year preceding the claim for tax relief should not exceed 42,500 or jointly if married, $52,500 to qualify for a tax credit from the Town of North Branford. And I agree with Bill. The cost of living from 2,000 to the present has really risen, and those prices should be adjusted accordingly so we could afford or offer our senior citizens some kind of credit during the year when they're faced with whether to buy medicine, food, or pay their taxes. Also, in section 21310, the amount of tax credit afforded under this program shall be $300 per property. Again, from 2,000 to today, 22 years later, $300 is really not a lot of money. We should be addressing that as well. And the Town of North Branford assessor is authorized to implement the program and to adopt the rules and regulations necessary to help our senior citizens. And Bill, you're 100% right. We should do something about increasing the income for married and unmarried. We should do something about increasing the amount of $300, increasing it to something, and we should have our assessor do something in favor of the senior citizens, some who may be veterans who served either World War II, Korea, Vietnam, or the Gulf, to do something for them, to help them out. And we should look into that there, Mr. Mayor, to say, okay, how do we address the issues that Bill Savistano has raised to us tonight, to say, how do we help our senior citizens? Am I correct, Bill?
Correct.
Thank you for your insight. Thank you very much. Mike Tompkins. Sorry, Tom, Mr. Tom, Mayor, apologize. Is that something that we can have you guys look into and make some suggestions to us?
I love my time.
Okay.
We have that compression issue between the state L.A. program and our town program. The state increases the limits on an basis we deny. In 2000, for example, the state limit for married people was 30,000, ours is 52,000. Now, the state's income limit for married is 48,000, ours is 52,000. So we should base, again, it's a compression issue, and I don't have any influence over the statute or the ordinance to increase or decrease the benefit.
But I believe that we are divided or separated from the state. We can do whatever we want as a town.
By ordinance.
That's right. We can do what we want as a town council to accommodate the senior citizens, to increase the single and married incomes for our senior citizens, as well as increasing the $300 to some other revenue, some other number, to help our residents during this time.
Yeah, I'd like to do some research and make some suggestions.
Yeah, please do. Yeah, I appreciate that.
So we can have the information, I mean, we're going to be starting budget season, you know, in the springtime, and so that this would be valuable information
Absolutely.
as we develop our budget for next year, so.
It should not affect the state of what it costs us.
Please do. Mr. Savistano, thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
Counselor May, thank you likewise for your thoughts, and appreciate that, David. Okay.
Just a quick update, Field Hockey did win tonight.
Nice.
So they are going to the finals. So good luck, Coach Noon and her team.
Okay, well, that's great. All right, on to item 11, Resignations and Appointments, seeing none. Moving on to item 12, Unfinished Business, Discussion and Action. Item A, Update to our Auger House Use Agreement. I think we just need to, it's been...